Did you call me in order to roll call?
Ms. May.
Here.
Mr. Roth.
Present.
Mrs. Scott.
Here.
Ms. Hogan.
Present.
Mr. Zawada.
Here.
Mr. Hemingway.
Here.
Mr. Updegroff.
Here.
Mr. Brophy.
Here.
Mr. Catterella.
Here.
All present.
It's all rise for a pledge of allegiance to God. A pledge of allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for its stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Four school directors called executive session on Tuesday, September 26th, 2023 following the meeting topic was informational. The meeting lasted approximately 60 minutes. We also met Tuesday, October 10th, 2023, topic international informational. This meeting lasted approximately 30 minutes.
Mrs. Moyer is going to do a brief welcome to Culverdale.
Good evening, everyone. Obviously, I am not Mrs. Mason. Some things that were taking place this evening have actually been put on hold as she had a family emergency today. So I am happy to welcome all of you to Culverdale Elementary. And with that said, I'm going to kick it off for Mrs. Mason. Enjoy.
Thank you, Mrs. Moyer. Next, we will have the Boyer Town Area School District Prevention Program presentation by Dr. Horton and Mr. Smalldeans.
Good evening. I'm Dave Smalldeans, I'm the Assistant Principal at Middle School West. I'm joined by the tag team tonight, Dr. Horton, who is our supervisor of student services. We want to talk to you about prevention programs that we have here in the Boyer Town Area School District. And also, we wanted to take some time before that to talk to you about our Safe to Say Something program, which is, it's actually a state program. Coincidentally, and this was not planned, some of the things we are going to talk about is bullying and kind of the impact of that. Today, in our middle schools, in both middle schools, we had a presentation given by a gentleman named Mr. John Halligan, who presented something called Ryan's Story. And it's a compelling story. He was here about six years ago, and I got to see him during my first year. He presented about his son, who was the victim of bullying, and ultimately took his life for that. This gentleman has made it his mission to travel the country and speak to over 2 million students, or 1 million students in over 2,000 schools throughout our country. So as we speak right now tonight, he's actually leading a parent presentation at Middle School West. So the timing of this, you know, couldn't be better from that standpoint. So the first piece we want to talk about is the Safe to Say Something program. This is something that was established by the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, and it is run out of the Attorney General's Office for the state. It started, I believe, right around 2020. And we came and talked to you about this several years ago, right as it was starting. So we were very new to it. We didn't know much about it. We were being trained on it ourselves. We just established a team. And we wanted to just kind of share with you how it has evolved over time. One of the key pieces is that it is identifying at-risk behaviors or identifying signals that students may see their peers having out there in public, like if somebody says they want to hurt themselves. The Safe to Say Something program is an anonymous tip source that can offer help. And I can tell you, there have been many, many times, and we'll look at some data here, that we have helped students within our own district with a variety of different things. So you have a team that is made up of all of our school police officers, several school administrators, Dr. Horton, and Mrs. Torsha. It's a 24/7 team. So we get, I'll be honest, we get a lot of calls on the weekends. We get a lot of calls late at night. And it is, you know, it's something where somebody goes in, puts a tip into the system, and it takes them to, I guess, like a dispatch center somewhere in Harrisburg somewhere. And then they reach out to us for the contact information for that family. And oftentimes, they end up sending the police to do welfare checks. And then we also follow up at school to make sure that that student is okay, if they need any counseling services or student assistance program services for that. That's for the one piece of it. It also is used, to be honest, it's kids, turn in other kids who are vaping at school. We get a lot of those, to be honest. I'll show you some data from there. You know, if somebody is making a threatening comment towards a person or to a school, you know, that has come through there. So there have been a variety of different tips, I guess you could say, that have come in over the last couple of years. And you'll see, and I'll have you switch to the next one, Mr. Shaw. The numbers of tips that have come in have gone up significantly. So the first year, 2021, is really the first year we were active with it. We had a total of 58 tips over the course of the school year. The second year, that went up to 127. And then last year, we had almost 200 tips that come in. And understand, when those come in, every single one of those are investigated. So whether it comes in during the school day, which we get some, and it says, you know, Johnny's a vape, that's an investigation that takes place by administration or the security, or a combination of both. If it's, you know, hey, I think Johnny, you know, is, is thinking of hurting himself, he's published some things on social media. I can tell you, we often get a lot of social media posts that are forwarded to us. Oftentimes, we work with our partners in the police to kind of determine if that's something that needs to be pursued. But everything is investigated. So as you can imagine, 200 separate investigations that come in at all different times, that definitely is a big undertaking. But again, I will tell you, there have been, there have been some that have been phony or ones that are not able to be pursued. But I will tell you that there have been many that have been legitimate ones that we were able to step in and prevent something from taking place. And then we do have some preliminary numbers for this year. And actually, the number now, it says 41. That was as of the beginning of October. We're now up to 48 or 49 as of today. So we actually, we actually received one around 5:00 tonight that was a...
Self-harm.
Yeah, self-harm. So it was somebody who had made social media postings about wanting to hurt themselves. So it's something that we investigate. And as a team, you know, we try to cover all different aspects. We call home, we get the police involved. And, you know, there's a lot of moving parts to it. So we wanted to kind of tease out some of the specific data regarding, you know, some of the things that we're seeing that are tied to what Dr. Horton is going to speak about. Before that, though, I do want to mention that the state requires that we train every student in middle school and high school. So it's a secondary program. So at the beginning of the school year, during our beginning of the year opening class meetings, when we give out the rules and all the different things about school, we tell them about Safe to Say Something and how that works, what that looks like, what are warning signs to look for, and we kind of present that out there. And then we also share that with parents in our weekend reviews and also our open house type events. So we do share that out there. At the high school, I know that they have a video that they have made that kind of goes out as part of their first day activities. So we have trained, and the students are very much aware of it. And that is probably some of the reason that the numbers of tips have gone up significantly over the years as well. All right. So some of the big areas that kind of tie in with what we're looking at are the areas of bullying. And as you know, you know, people can be mean to each other at times. And as you know, social media has made that 10,000 times worse over the last couple of years, made it very difficult because we have very little jurisdiction over a lot of that. But we do, again, work with our police partners. But I will tell you, people can be cruel online. And we hear a lot of things that are out there. And again, we, you know, we tell parents, contact the police. If it's something in school, we try to meet with the parties, we try to work through it. Sometimes that's successful, sometimes not. But I will tell you, when people post things online, they say things that most times they would never say to somebody's face. It's just, it's brutal. And, you know, and this is not a Boyer Town problem, it's a worldwide problem with just the social media piece that's out there. Cutting and self-harm, as you can see, there were 19 cases of those that came in last year. And I will tell you, most of them were legit, to be honest. And they were ones that, between the police visiting, working with the families, and our own internal supports that we had in place, we were able to provide a lot of assistance for students who were going through challenges in their life for whatever reason. Depression and anxiety kind of tied to those pieces. Kind of not related to the bullying piece is the drugs and vapes. So we had over 50 referrals, tips about students using drugs and vapes in the middle schools and high school. And those are all investigated. And I will tell you, many of those resulted in actual items being found. And the vapes can be dangerous because, you know, you have the ones you can buy at, you know, at Wawa that are the nicotine. But there are a lot out there that have these THC or other things in them, which are, you know, drugs. It's, you know, oftentimes, they have no clue what's even in them when they're putting them into themselves. Harassment is one that we kind of tie in with things that are taking place online a lot of times. And just beating down on some people online, and again, trying to get students to shut that stuff down and block. And I'll tell you, it is a daily, a daily battle. And then suicide ideation, which is the most serious. And, you know, 26 of those last year. So if you look at the cutting self-harm, depression, and anxiety, and suicide ideation, that's a pretty high number of our 197 tips from last year. So without Safe to Say, I would say many of these may not come to us, and we may not hear about them, and we may not be able to step in early enough to help somebody who's struggling for, again, whatever reason. So this has been certainly a time-consuming process, and it will continue to be that. But it is something that I do believe has reaped, not rewards, but it has reaped benefits in helping people who are, you know, struggling at one time or another in their life. I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Horton, who's going to talk about some other items that we have.
So as Mr. Smalldeans, you know, shared, that Safe to Say program really is part of our prevention program because it brings to our attention things that our students are experiencing and things that our students are seeing. And they can share that information with us. So it allows us to be in front of some things that we might not have awareness of, so that we can put supports and services in place for students, and to get in contact with parents. When we receive that type of information on the weekends, you know, it allows us to call those parents when we hear that students are potentially cutting or making self-harm comments, so that there can be an intervention that takes place, so that we can provide that prevention and support, instead of waiting later until they come back at school or until we saw signs that were more significant. So having that anonymous student voice really allows us to engage in more of that prevention piece. Building on that, the PACE Youth Survey, the Pennsylvania Youth Survey, is something that happens biannually. And this is part of the prevention work that we do as well. Because this survey that's administered to students, is administered to students in 6th, 8th, 10th, and 12th grades. And really, it provides a snapshot of the student experience. It allows us to gain their perceptions in the areas of their community, their perceptions about school, family, and themselves, that peer individual piece. And so really, this survey is looking at students, can we just go up to the next slide, Mr. Shaw, please? Students' perceptions related to alcohol, tobacco, and other drugs, the social-emotional health, again, that would be that mental health, that mental wellness piece, the school climate and safety, that would tie into that harassment, that potential bullying that we see at times, and the community involvement. So just looking at those more specifically, I just want to touch a little bit about what they are. That community involvement piece allows us to look at prevention factors for our students. What are some factors and activities that our students are engaging in that are positive and provide protective factors when we know that there can be those risk factors? So what things are students engaging in the community, like sports, or music, or community service, that provide protective factors when they may be struggling with social-emotional health concerns related to mental health? Or, you know, what are the activities that keep them away from drug and alcohol, right? So instead of participating in parties or spending time with peers who are maybe engaging those behaviors, what other positive factors are in the community for students to engage with? So the information from the PACE survey allows us to have that snapshot into what our students are experiencing that we may not know, because the survey is anonymous, right? So it's something that's voluntary and anonymous for students, and it's confidential. So they can share things with us that might be otherwise not shared with us because they wouldn't want to come and tell us in person, right? Because they don't want to say, oh, my friends are doing this. I don't want to get in trouble. So by using this anonymous voluntary survey, we can gain information from our students that we can use to plan for programming within the school. What types of areas do we need to be looking at when we're looking at programs of prevention? What information are we bleeding from our students that say, you know, a lot of students are struggling with positive friendships, right? They're having some experiences with bullying or harassment. What can we do to bring our students together and engage in a way that's more positive? And some of that you've heard about, right? Participating in our Student Leadership Days that we've done with Tom Stecker, that allows our students to engage and get to know students that they may not otherwise engage with and connect with just based on interest or the different classes that they're in. So we can bring students together in positive ways that can provide those protective factors and what we would call some resilience. So just wanted to share what that was. If we go back just a little bit, I just want to share a little history. The district has been participating in the survey since 2013. And prior to that, we also participated in the very first year, 1989. And then there's a gap in the data. I think initially, the survey was something that had to be paid for, but the first year, I think, districts got to do. And then in between, I'm not sure where we were. But in 2013, the survey was offered for free to all districts. And we've been participating in their survey since that time, when it was available to us. Looking at the data from last year, the last one we did, 2021, and 2019, we have approximately a 75% participation rate. So 75% of our students are choosing to participate in that survey that's voluntary and anonymous for them. So I feel that that gives us a lot of information on the majority of what our students are experiencing, and is valuable data to help us plan for the future. You know, again, how do we use this information? The PACE survey really allows us to triangulate our data. It allows us to look at the information that we hear from the students through the survey and compare that to our Safe to Say numbers. Where are we seeing the most instance of reports from students? And also at our staff data. When we look at our staff data at the end of the year, we can see how many referrals we had to the Student Assistance Program for mental health, for drug and alcohol, for other concerns. And that way, we're seeing that on the PACE and in our staff data and Safe to Say, that we have a high number of students with suicide ideation. We know that's an area that we really need to focus on. So it allows us to compare that, so that we're making educated decisions on how we can best support our students. We also use this information from the PACE in the summer in our action planning meetings. So in the summer, for two days, our school teams get together. And this is part of the information that's provided to them as they're looking at their school climate and culture goal. And again, participating in the PACE, it allows us to really work towards that goal of fostering and protecting the dignity and safety for all. This allows us to put preventions in place that helps to keep our students safe and healthy when they're here. All right. A little bit about some of the prevention activities that we do put in place. I'm just going to stop for one minute. The link that we put in.
It is not.
It's not there.
It's not, it's not yet, but yeah.
Okay.
Keep talking.
Okay. So some of the elementary prevention activities, I'm just going to take a look down here on my version, so I can talk to it, that we put in place for our students. We have the Student Assistance Program at all levels. So we have that at the elementary level, and both middle schools and our high school level. That team allows us to look at what we call non-academic barriers to student learning. So it allows us to focus on what are some of those mental health issues or behavioral issues that could be providing a barrier to academic success in our school. And also, it allows us to look especially more at the secondary level, any drug and alcohol concerns. So we call these the non-academic barriers to learning. And we have liaisons from the Karen Foundation, as well as Creative Health, who sit on our teams, who specialize in those areas, to help us really look at students and look at community resources, and identify how we can best support the individual needs of those students when we're working with them. Our Student Assistance Teams are also comprised of staff. So generally, our teams across the board have counselors on them, the building counselors, building principals, we have classroom teachers, we often have a learning support teacher, and often, most of our buildings have their school nurse as well. So we can really look at that well-rounded approach when we're looking. So we have multiple lenses looking to identify what are some of the things we're seeing in the student, and what's our best prevention efforts for them. Across the district, this month is actually National, I'm not going to get it right, Drug Prevention Awareness Month. So we're participating in Red Ribbon Week, which is October 23rd to October 31st. And in our buildings, we'll be participating in that week with spirit days at the elementary level, and we can look at those in a minute. At the high school, they're going to be making morning announcements, because for the theme this year is Be Kind to Your Mind. So for example, at the high school, they're going to have morning announcements related to that theme. They'll have one maybe about kindness or empathy, and different things, things we can do to have a positive mindset. We also, at the elementary level, in 5th grade, we facilitate the Too Good for Drugs curriculum in 5th grade, because we had noticed from our last PACE data that our students, when they're getting to the middle school, that we were seeing 6th grade, that our vaping numbers were going up. So we wanted to be able to address this. So we knew if we're starting to see this earlier in the middle school, we need to start putting robust prevention in place at the elementary school. So we have been doing that in 5th grade, and now we're going to be using that same program in 3rd grade. Although it says Too Good for Drugs, the focus isn't really, all the lessons aren't related to drugs, but it's really building that positive resiliency, coping strategies. So when I'm feeling, you know, uncomfortable or anxious, what are some positive things I can do? Identifying feelings. If I'm feeling uncomfortable, so what can I do to help myself across that? So our Karen liaisons, our staff teams, help us with that and facilitate those lessons for us. Our counselors doing classroom guidance lessons, you know, focusing on what is a good friendship, right? How to, if I'm in a fight with my friend, how can I solve that conflict in a productive way? So maintaining those relationships, because we know that solid relationships also provide resiliency for our students and reduce bullying and conflict.
Sorry.
That's okay. If you want to click on that Red Ribbon link real quick, this will be just a snapshot for you of some of the Spirit Week activities that may happen during Red Ribbon Week. And this is actually for Culverdale. I pulled out their flyer, so I don't think this is out yet, so to make preview on what will be coming out for Culverdale during their Red Ribbon Week Spirit Days. Again, you can see just the positive messaging, the Wear Red, Hugs Not Drugs, Peace Out to Drugs, and really, you know, talking about, you know, positive activities instead of maladaptive coping skills. Go ahead on to the next one, Mr. Shaw. Here is just, and again, these lists are just giving you an idea. It's not necessarily all-inclusive of everything we do, but provides just a snapshot. Again, so at the middle school and high school, we have those student assistant programs. Again, across the levels, participating in the Red Ribbon Week activities. At the middle school, we have our Reach Course. And really, in there, they're focusing on a lot of the prevention things that we talked about. They have a mental health unit where they're talking about positive coping strategies and what that looks like. They have presentations related to mental health, and presentations related to vaping from Coca. And Officer Perez and Officer Bohm also present to our middle school students on drug prevention and how to stay safe and healthy. At the high school, we have presentations on vaping as well. We have the Signs of Suicide program that we implement in 9th grade, and our Stat Club and Impact Club, again, working to promote student wellness. And this year, we have in our freshman day program, I'm Enough, where one of our school counselors, in conjunction with our school-based counselor, will be talking to students about, you know, ways to handle anxiety when you have it, and what that would look like. And just talking about, you know, some anxiety is normal. If you have a big test, you know, you might feel a little anxious about that, and that's okay. But how do you bring yourself down so that you can do your best on the test? Okay. Again, we have prevention activities in place for our staff as well. So our staff participates in suicide awareness training, and this helps us to identify signs in students so that we can be ahead of it and put prevention factors in place and identify students who need more support. The child abuse recognition reporting hours that we do, training there, safety and security, active shooter, and all of our staff are required to participate in trauma training as well, which is part of our comprehensive plan, and everyone will go through during that period. If you want to go back a couple of slides to the last PACE slide, I just want to share with you... Not this one either. We will share with you, or get to you, there's a video that the students are going to be shown before participating in the PACE program. And it's a video by students, and it's really sending the message of the purpose of what the survey is for, as well as that voluntary and anonymous and confidential aspect of the survey, so that students know at any time, if they come across a question that they're uncomfortable with, that they can skip, or they can choose not to participate in the survey, or stop taking it if they're not comfortable with it. Again, also, I did fail to mention that parents have the opportunity to opt their students out of taking the survey if they would like as well. So we will be putting out a communication, and we'll put that out two weeks prior to the survey, so that parents have time to opt their students out if they choose to. Again, as I had shared, we have a pretty good participation rate with that, 75%. So I'm optimistic that we'll get lots of good information to help us plan for the future of our students. Thank you.
Dr. Horton, if you had a moment, does anyone have any other questions for Dr. Horton or Mr. Smalldeans?
Yep.
So out of the 197 instances, how many were founded?
Oh, for the Safe to Say's?
Yeah, I was gonna, yeah, I would say over 90%. We, some of them, we don't ever really know for sure, because they happen outside of school. But yeah, I would say 90% is a good number, yeah.
So are the other numbers, we were breaking it down, there's 130 there, are those all founded then?
For the most part, the ones that we picked out were the ones that we had the greatest incidence of. Some of the other ones that we may have gotten, just off the top of my head, I think there were a couple related to bus incidents or bus behavior.
Yeah, more general behavior type stuff.
More general that weren't as significant, but obviously.
Inappropriate language.
Yeah, inappropriate language. But we picked out the top ones, but certainly we could show, we could get you all them.
I appreciate it. Thanks.
Ms. Dugan, go ahead.
Yeah, with the suicide and the child abuse, I'm concerned over that it's every five years. I mean, things are changing gate day. So to go five years before you give some type of training again, that's.
So may I ask for help from my colleagues on this? So those are the required trainings from the state that were mandated to do. So I can share with you that every year at the beginning of the year when we have our started their faculty meetings, the building principals and the counselors share presentations with the staff in that building, and they are reminding staff about child abuse reporting, what child abuse looks like, signs and symptoms, and what to do if you suspect and what to do. And they also review information related to if you suspect that a student is expressing suicide ideation or self-harm, the steps to take in that building, to go to the counselor, to report it to the principal so that it can be investigated by the counselors. So as a counseling department, we participate in professional learning activities. Just yesterday at the county day, we were at a mental health day. So we're constantly talking about those topics, I think, as like the counseling department and then supporting teachers in it. But the required training by the state is those five years, but we're doing little things in between to keep everyone up to date about changes. And certainly, any changes in what is required come along, we're looking at that and implementing it. If we get notification from the state that we need to do things different, then we do that. But we're constantly looking at, are we doing what's best to support?
Okay. Also, with the cases that we're having, say Johnny or Suzie are out for a month, and the doctor just gives a note, we have no idea if there's some type of something going on at home that we don't know about. So in actuality, those numbers could be higher.
They certainly could, you know, be higher than what we know. I mean, that's always a possibility. You know, we work closely with families, and if we're suspecting, you know, that some things going on, and you know, there are times where there's students who, we have concerns about their attendance, who haven't been showing at the school regularly, and there are times that our district social worker and myself go out and do home visits to see, you know, is anyone still living there, to see if we can get eyes on the kiddos, to see if they look like they're cared for and what that looks like, and have conversations with families. So I think oftentimes, there's things that we're doing that we can't always share because of confidentiality factors, but we have different avenues to check in and try to ensure that things are as they should be, and certainly keeping that communication open with children and youth when we make reports, and if we have no information, to share that with caseworkers. But we constantly have our eyes open and look at different avenues on how we can ensure that we're doing the best that we can for them.
And Ms. Dugan, just to add, that if a student would be out on a doctor's note for that amount of period of time, they have to be, it has to go through the state, and then we assign a homebound instructor. So someone is going into the home. A student cannot go 30, 40 days without a construction or without touching base from a teacher. Okay? Ms. Scott has, Mrs. Scott has a question for you. Go ahead, Mrs. Scott.
Okay. Thank you so much for your presentation. I do have a question. It's very evident, and we know that social media is a hazard for our kids in so many ways. And so I appreciate that you are speaking to that. My question is, how can we involve the parents more in social media education? Because we know it's dangerous, but I'm sure I don't know every, you know, all the ins and outs of social media and what we can look for, what we should be looking for in our kids, what kind of signs might we see? What are the dangerous sites that there are? What is some practical monitoring that we can offer to parents so they can keep an eye over their kids? Because as a busy parent, parents don't always have the opportunity, and when they get this information, they'll say, oh yeah, I could, I can do this, or I can do that. They're just, they just need the focal point to start it. So is there any way that we could be communicating, maybe once a month, have like a social media kind of thing for parents? Not a meeting, just like an email with some bullet points about the hazards of social media, or, you know, something to kind of highlight this to the parents. Some parents know, some parents aren't aware of how dangerous social media is. So is this a thought? It's not really a question.
Well, Mr. Schmaldeens does have a response for you, Mrs. Scott.
So, Mrs. Scott, you raised a great question, and I will tell you, and I will tell you, I'll answer this as a parent of a 16-year-old myself, and having conversations weekly, sometimes daily, with parents, you're correct, there is, I think, a general lack of understanding the world that our students are in a lot of time when it comes to technology. That's really their world, and they know how to get around things, they know how to do so many things. I will tell you, and this has gotten much better over the last few years, even in an iPhone now, there are, there are things in there that you wouldn't even have to pay for as a parent called Screen Time, that you can actually monitor and lock down your child's phone during certain hours of the day. I mean, it's there, I use it online, she's 16-year-old, believe me, it's a mode of contention at our house, but that is locked down every night at 11 o'clock, and she can't do anything except for text me and my wife. And also, you can, if you have Comcast or other sources, you can shut the Wi-Fi off at certain times too, or you can set it to a limit of they can use the Wi-Fi for one hour, and then it shuts it off. There are so many different things. I will tell you, one of the frustrations though is, we have offered programs in the past, and nobody comes to them. But I do think that's an interesting idea about doing things in the week in review though, because I do think there, you know, each building does a week in review, and I do, you know, maybe that will give some information to somebody who didn't know it before. And I would imagine there's probably things that are created online already, that is just a matter of putting a link in for. But there definitely are a lot of tools built in to your home Wi-Fi and your child's phones that you don't even have to pay extra for, that really can lock things down and really make things more secure. I will tell you, a lot of parents come in and they are appalled by the stuff that's on their child's phone, and they don't know how it's on there, they don't know how it got there. There are so many things in place. You can even set it to approve the apps that the child downloads, if you have to approve anything that goes on their phone. So there's a lot there. So I think you raise a really good point.
Yeah, I would love to see that implemented because, you know, I know it's more time, but this is important to our kids. And you're bringing up all this mental health. We hear about it at the board a lot, and I just feel like parents are so busy, they don't have all this information. Some of the things you just said, I did not know. And I'm watching it. So parents that just aren't tuned in at all, they're missing a big part of what their child's doing, and they can't be missing that today.
And just to add, Mrs. Moyer and I have also been in the works of putting together that information and adding it to our newsletter. There has been information shared to help bring parents up to speed with respects to social media and things that their students are, you know, engaging in. And so look out for it in our next upcoming newsletters, okay?
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you. Any other questions? Oh, Ms. Dugan.
Well, two more to go. I do agree, there are a lot of apps out there that parents can control their children's phones, they can control their text messages, they can see everything that's coming through. They can see every call, and I know that because my granddaughter wasn't allowed to call me, so there was restriction times on there. I also heard you say about coping skills, and I would applaud using that a lot more. Only having a grandchild, coping skills are excellent. It beats some of the implications it puts the kids on. It really does.
And I will comment that, at least personally, you know, just working in a building with middle schoolers, which is a tough age in general, I will say, the whole COVID piece really worked on a lot of the coping skills for children and the resiliency. Now, I think we're starting to come back now, but it's not where it was prior yet. And you see students who are not able to deal and work through things that maybe four years ago, they could have a little bit more, and that is something that we're working to build back up. And I think parents are too with their children, but that is something that I think is, and I think that's a national thing as well, that we've seen is, just in general, people haven't been able to cope as well as they, as well as they did maybe five years ago.
And part of that, you know, is normalizing that sometimes we have bad days, you know, that's okay. And so when Erin Nestor and I lead trainings, we lead the trauma trainings, but also lead other trainings for our new teachers in the district and different topics. And when we're having conversations like that, I like to share with the teachers, you know, let the kiddos know if you're not having any close to yourself, you know? Maybe you were running out the door, you spilled your coffee and got all over you, and you had to run back in, change your clothes, and you're running a couple minutes late, and you get to class and you're like, oh, right? You know, it's okay to say to your kids, hey, I'm really having a rough morning. You know, I got off to a rough start, you know, I was feeling really anxious, I was running late, you know? And let them know, like, that's okay to have those feelings of running a little high. And then, but also to take it one step further and model and say, you know, when I was feeling that way, I just stopped and took a couple deep breaths and just got myself together, right? And I think sometimes as adults, we don't speak that out loud because we just automatically do it. But our kids don't automatically do it because they have to be taught, right? And so if we share, because sometimes we don't want to let our guard down, right, and say that we maybe had a rough morning, right? Because what will someone think? If I say, oh, I was running a little hot, running late, spilled my coffee. But when we do that, we let kids know that that's okay, right? And this is what you can do to get yourself back on track, right? So if we ignore it, we put shame there, and then our kiddos say, it's not okay for me to talk about this. But then they don't get the help they need at the earliest onset, and then we don't know until something's bigger. And then it's harder to put those coping strategies or their supports in place. So the more we just have those little conversations, which just take a couple minutes, we can do that all the time, and just share different tidbits along the way. And we know that repetition builds skill and confidence, right? So the more tokens and little nuggets we give our kiddos like that, they're going to start to grab on to them, right? Imagine your own kids, I have an 18-year-old son, some conversations help me all the time, but now they've settled in there, right? And he's committed them to memory because we had ongoing little conversations and tidbits.
Yeah, so one, I love what you just were talking about, and how as adults, when we're willing to be vulnerable with children and kind of, you know, share our own weaknesses and bad days, how we really teach them, I feel like that's the number one killer to shame, right? Because we're really teaching kids, it's okay to fall. And it's also a great way to help them build resiliency. So thanks for talking about that because it's something I feel passionate about. But so I just wanted to talk a little bit about the data collection. So I know we're collecting data through Safe to Say, and then we're collecting data through the PACE survey, both really important pieces. And then, like in-person reporting, we're collecting data through that as well. Like when we are having maybe a kid identified in the classroom, we're collecting that data as well, correct?
Sure. So we have the data from our staff, like teams that we're collecting those referrals. So we know the number of referrals that we're getting in each building. Obviously, we know who those referrals are for the students, but when that's reported to the state, that's anonymous, just a number. So that, you know, we have to do state reporting for that. So that's, we're collecting at the building level as well, so we can look at trends. And then obviously, you know, our counselors have information about how many suicide assessments they've done. We have that information as well, how many students may have had further assessment either at the hospital or through mobile crisis. Those are, you know, information in cases that we have as well. Obviously, other data points we can look at are discipline referrals, how many students have had policy violations related to drug and alcohol, to vaping. So we have that information as well. And so when we compile all that and look at it together, we can really start to identify patterns and areas that we need to address as we move forward.
Great. And then I just wanted to say, I have a daughter, Robert, at the school East, and I always say to her, what did she do in school today? Usually she says nothing. She's in sixth grade. But today she came home and she said, oh, we had an assembly. And I said, oh, really? And she said, yeah, about bullying and suicide. And we had a really great conversation about that and about, you know, this is why we never know what people are dealing with, and this is why we don't do Mean Girl stuff, as we like to call it. But I think, you know, just thank you to the middle school team and to everyone who was instrumental in putting that together and bringing it, because I think it's important information.
And I will say, I can't speak to East, but I did talk to Dr. Maori earlier, and he said that their students were very engaged and very well behaved, and I would say the same for the West students. And he did comment that both buildings, the presenter commented that both students in both buildings were very well behaved and very attentive, and he did thank both groups for that today. So the kids did take it seriously today during the message.
Yeah, she really did seem to get something out of it. Like I said, usually it's like, nothing. I'm like, tell me one thing, you did nothing. I went to lunch. So, you know, it was nice to hear something different today. So thank you.
All right. Thank you. Next, we will have the finance presentation from Ms. Danaklou.
Good evening, everyone. There is nothing on tonight's agenda that will be voted on in regards to this, but this is a precursor to the budget season and kind of gives us a starting point for where our budget will start. And then we review the real estate assessment history and the 2024-25 Act One information. As far as Act One, I'm going to review the calculation factors so you can understand where that data comes from, from the state level, provide the 2024-25 base Act One index, the district's 24-25 adjusted base index and its history, and then review some proposed, a proposed Act One resolution and some potential legislative impact to our budget timeline. Also provide my suggestion for a 24-25 budget timeline. So from an assessment standpoint, since 2016-17, our total taxable assessments totaled Those taxable assessments district-wide have grown through '23-'24 by $178,311,925 to a total taxable assessment of $2,802,208,529. You can see, broken down by municipality, the largest changes have been in Douglas Township in Berks County, New Hanover, and then Washington Township as well. So it kind of gives you an idea of how the assessment values have grown. I also provided a graphical representation, sometimes it's easier to see, you could see that from 2016 to '17 through 2023-'24, our assessment values have remained relatively stable, but the largest percentage dollar growth again has been in Douglas and Washington Township and Berks County and New Hanover Township and Montgomery County. Colbrukdale and Boyertown have experienced late decreases in assessment values, each with a decrease of approximately 1% in value over that time period. As far as the real estate assessment history and the number of properties in our district, you can see that in 2016-17, district-wide, we had 19,456 taxable properties. In 2023-'24, that has grown to 20,445 properties. The largest increases have again been in New Hanover, Washington Township, and Douglas Township, Berks. Again, you can see graphically, we've remained relatively constant. Valley has gone from 476 to 484 taxable properties. Becklesville has gone from 338 to 339 during the 2016-17 to '23-'24 timeframe. Boyertown has fallen from 1,426 to 1,419. Colbrukdale has grown from 2,204 to 2,207. Douglas Township, Berks, has grown from 1,619 properties, 1,775. Douglas Township, Montgomery County, has grown from 3,960 properties to 4,148 properties. Earl Township has grown slightly from 1,523 properties to 1,530. New Hanover has grown from 4,724 properties to 5,092 properties. Upper Frederick has grown from 1,379, I'm sorry, decreased slightly to 1,372. And Washington Township has grown from 1,807 to 2,079 properties. So you can kind of see from a number of properties from a taxable perspective how that has grown or slightly decreased. The statewide base Act One index was released by the state. The base index is 5.3% for 2024-'25. For those of you who are not aware, the state bases this calculation based on the average of the percentage increase in what's called the SOL, which is the statewide average weekly wage, which is determined by the Department of Labor and Industry. average weekly wage, which is determined by the Department of Labor and Industry, and the percentage increase in the ECI, or the Employment Cost Index, as released by the Federal Department of Labor Bureau of Labor Statistics. So those two numbers correlate into how the base index is created. The base index is the number that limits how much a district can raise taxes by without going to referendum vote. The Oregon Primary School District receives an adjusted index, like many other districts. Our adjusted index is based upon our market value personal income aid ratio of .4662. That .4662 calculates off of the base index and factors into adjusted index for the district of 6.4%. The market value aid ratio is a function of the school district's market values and our average daily membership or student enrollment compared to the total state market values and average daily membership for the state. And the personal income aid ratio likewise is a function of the school district's personal income and ADMs or average daily membership as compared to the total state personal income and state ADMs. So those are the factors that correlate into what makes up the district's market value personal income aid ratio and gets us from the base index of 5.3% to our adjusted index of 6.4%. That adjusted index is the maximum amount the district for the 2024-25 budget year that we could raise taxes without seeking referendum for a higher level. As we have done in the past years, administration is recommending that we approve the Act One resolution agreeing not to raise taxes above the adjusted index of 6.4%. Again, there's nothing on tonight's agenda in regards to this resolution. We would be placing our recommendation on the following board meeting. You can see that since 2016-17, the millet rate has increased from 24.27 to most recently, the 2023-24 year of 30.814 mils. So you can kind of see how it's grown. In 2018, there was an increase of 5.4%, but from 2019-20 through 2324, it's tempered to an average of about a 3% increase. There is some legislation currently in Harrisburg floating around that would change the 2024 primary election date. There are three different scenarios that could change the primary election date, which then in turn would change our Act One budget-related deadlines. PASVO has delved into each of these scenarios. Scenario one, the primary election would occur on April 23rd. Scenario two, it would occur on March 19th. Scenario three, it would occur on April 2nd. If any of those things would happen, it would change the deadline by which we would have to pass the Act One resolution. Under scenario one, it would be January 4th would be the deadline. Scenario two, it would be November 30th, and scenario three, it would be December 14th. Now legislative action is looking uncertain at this time, that the primary election date would move from April 23rd as it's currently slated. However, if any of those three scenarios occur, we may be out of compliance. So I've built the budget timeline so that we remain within compliance with Act One regardless of what happens at the state level. So our proposed budget timeline would be October 24, 2023, adopt the Act One resolution, thereby agreeing to not raise the school real estate taxes above the 6.4%. From January through June, we would have budget updates and presentations to delve through all the factors building up the budget. May 14, 2024, we would adopt the proposed final budget, and then June 11, we would adopt the final budget. And that's it. Questions?
Yep, so BCIU. Our last meeting was October 21. I will send you, which I believe you already have, but I'll send you again, what happened in the BCIU board meeting, the news link, which does talk about the new superintendent's academy, that some of the new superintendents in Berks County attended. And there was a COLA meeting, which I was unable to attend. And I will send out the legislative update as well, so everyone can read through that and just see what's happening at the federal and state levels. So that's all for me.
Yeah, I have a report from the Ole Berks Career Technical Center. The BCTC Horder Cultural Students admitted a variety of entries to the 23 Ole Fair. We had Logan Jones from Boyertown Horder Culture. He finished third place in a floral arrangement. We had C. Ossis Key, Boyertown Horder Culture. She finished first place in basket. And I have Avia Reiner, Boyertown Horder Culture, finished first place in Arrangements of Carnations. I was there and I looked at them, and they were very good. I appreciate the Boyertown students and what they do at the BCTC. That's all.
Mr. Shield, Facilities Presentation.
Good evening. Tonight's board meeting was supposed to focus on the Facility Department. So before I dive into these four larger projects, I wanted to take a moment to thank all behind-the-scenes individuals in our department. They don't get seen very often. They don't get recognized very often because they're behind the scenes, and they keep our buildings clean and functioning to the best of their abilities. One of the main problems we had in my department was being understaffed, and all of these people have pitched together and made sure that the buildings were able to be operated the next day. So I want to take a moment to thank So tonight, I'm going to share with you the roofing project at GES, the feasibility study for TURF, the Gasboy upgrade at the district gas station, pump station over at Port Service, and the security projects. The roof at Gilbertsville, I did this presentation last week, so it has gotten a lot further. The entire roof has been base coated. Roof section 12 and 11, a portion of 11, need to be top coated yet. As long as we have sunshine and no rain, it should be done by next week. They'll be cleaned up, touched up, and ready to go. Here's a picture of the coating. I think it looks fantastic. I like the tan color. I think it really makes a building look well. It really came out clean, much better than what it looked like when I started, or when we started this project. So as you can see, here is the roof laid out and numbered. If you can see, the gym roof is 12. That needs to be top coated. They're going to work on that tomorrow. And that blue portion of 11, that needs to be top coated. So I had a walkthrough with KCBA and North Sports today for the turf fields. I took the questions that were asked at the last meeting, the water line, the environmental impact, also separated pricing for the fields, and made sure that those will all be in the study. Same with the groomer and anything else that was adding fencing, multi-line versus single line, different substrates. So all that should be included in the study. So Gasboy would currently use a Dell desktop from the 90s that's hooked to an antique-looking gas pump which uses cards. There's no way for the entire district to access that information, so we're going to a cloud-based ECOS, that's ICA system. We were trained yesterday and started to fill the spreadsheets so that we can differentiate between Quigley's vehicles and the district vehicles for fueling. And we set that up. So that project, they're supposed to have the equipment there next week. So the Facility Department has, under the direction of Mrs. Torsha and Ms. Danakola, we're building a budget for security so that from year to year, we will be able to budget enough money that we can move forward, both in technology and physical barriers. I'm not going to go over them because we're in a public meeting, but we're going to do our best to stay on top technologically-wise and also with basic physical barriers. So we want to budget enough that we can stay on top of that. Questions?
I guess, does that mean Gilbert's roofs are done?
They'll be done next week.
I mean, as far as all the roofs on Gilbertsville?
No, there's two foam roofs that have not been done, but they were not leaking to the point where we deemed them an emergency. One was done in 2013. That one still looks pretty good. One was slightly older, I think it was 2001.
Where do they sit in the capital budget?
Probably three years from now is what will be determined, whether it should be done. And they're foamed, so they'll get scarified and refoamed and coated with silicone. They won't be the cost of all of this because this was...
But they're in the plan, you're scheduling three years. Okay, that's fine.
Yeah, all roofs are in.
What does it guarantee you on those roofs?
25 years for Gilbertsville and 15 for Earl. Earl got hit to the spring because of lead times on materials. So there was no way we could do it by winter time and have it done without disrupting school.
Okay. On the turf fields, the DMAC test, is that taken into consideration, the different types of fields that they're looking at?
Yeah.
Do you have a estimate on?
Yes. The different impact ratings, the padding versus not having padding and all that, that will all be in there, and the costs that are associated with that, different substrate levels.
I'd really like to make sure we get that, you know, so if we ever decide to do it, that we have all the information. But thank you.
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Shield.
No problem. Thank you.
No one signed up for public comment period number one, so at this time, look for approval of September 26. Board of School Directors, meeting minutes.
Second move.
Sorry.
I'll second.
Ms. Nyman.
Yes.
Ms. Duroff.
Yes.
Mrs. Scott.
Yes.
Ms. Hogan.
Yes.
Mr. Zawada.
Yes.
Mr. Hemingway.
Yes.
Mr. Updegrove.
Yes.
Mr. Brophy.
Yes.
Mr. Panarala.
Yes.
Motion carries. All right. Under the superintendent's itemized agenda, the first item is acting high school principal agreement. I'm going to be making a motion to amend this motion this evening from acting high school principal to appointing Mrs. Karen Evans as the Boyertown Area High School Principal effective October 11, 2023, at a salary of $131,439 with benefits in accordance with the Act 93 agreement. How is that?
You're withdrawing the prior motion, and instead of, you're just offering this as a substitute motion.
That is what I am doing.
Okay. It's not an amendment. Okay.
So I'll be looking for the board to approve this.
So I move.
So is it Mr. Zawada first and Mr. Updegrove or Mr. Panarala?
Duroff.
Okay. Ms. Nyman.
Yes.
Ms. Duroff.
Yes.
Mrs. Scott.
Yes.
Ms. Hogan.
Yes.
Mr. Zawada.
Yes.
Mr. Hemingway.
Yes.
Mr. Updegrove.
Yes.
Mr. Brophy.
Yes.
Mr. Panarala.
Yes.
Motion carries. Next, the recommended action is for the Board of School Directors to approve the teacher on special assignment agreement as presented.
Nyman moves.
Hogan second. Ms. Nyman.
Yes.
Ms. Duroff.
Yes.
Mrs. Scott.
Yes.
Ms. Hogan.
Yes.
Mr. Zawada.
Yes.
Mr. Hemingway.
Yes.
Mr. Updegrove.
Yes.
Mr. Brophy.
Yes.
Mr. Panarala.
Yes.
Motion carries. Next, I'll be looking for the Board of School Directors to approve Policy 251, Students Experiencing Homelessness, Foster Care, and Other Educational Instability for Second Reading and Approval effective October 11, 2023.
So I move.
Hogan second.
Yes.
Ms. Duroff.
Yes.
Mrs. Scott.
Yes.
Ms. Hogan.
Yes.
Mr. Zawada.
Yes.
Mr. Hemingway.
Yes.
Mr. Updegrove.
Yes.
Mr. Brophy.
Yes.
Mr. Panarala.
Yes.
Motion carries. Approval of the creation of a student activity count for BASH, leukemia, and lymphoma student club.
You missed that second reading.
Oh, I'm sorry. I am just right along. Let's go to the next, I'm going to be looking for approval of the second reading of the Policy 827 Conflict of Interest for Second Reading and Approval effective October 11, 2023. Nyman moves.
I'll second.
Ms. Nyman.
Yes.
Ms. Duroff.
Yes.
Mrs. Scott.
Yes.
Ms. Hogan.
Yes.
Mr. Zawada.
Yes.
Mr. Hemingway.
Yes.
Mr. Updegrove.
Yes.
Mr. Brophy.
Yes.
Mr. Panarala.
Yes.
Motion carries. Now I'll be looking for the approval of the creation of a student activity count for the BASH leukemia and lymphoma student club. Duroff, please. Hogan second. Ms. Nyman.
Yes.
Ms. Duroff.
Yes.
Mrs. Scott.
Yes.
Ms. Hogan.
Yes.
Mr. Zawada.
Yes.
Mr. Hemingway.
Yes.
Mr. Updegrove.
Yes.
Mr. Brophy.
Yes.
Mr. Panarala.
Yes.
Motion carries. Next, we're looking for the Board of School Directors to approve the memorandum of understanding between Boyertown Area School District and Boyertown Area Education Association regarding the delivery of virtual instruction during school year 2023, 2024, and over the term described in this document as presented. Hogan moves.
I roll seconds.
Ms. Nyman.
Yes.
Ms. Duroff.
Yes.
Mrs. Scott.
Yes.
Ms. Hogan.
Yes.
Mr. Zawada.
Yes.
Mr. Hemingway.
Yes.
Mr. Updegrove.
Yes.
Mr. Brophy.
Yes.
Mr. Panarala.
Yes.
Motion carries. Last two, for the administration recommends the Board of School Directors approve the following personnel actions, including resignations, employment appointments, change of status, leave of absences, and supplemental contracts as per the attached.
So I move.
Hogan.
Yes.
Ms. Duroff. Mrs. Scott.
Yes.
Ms. Hogan.
Yes.
Mr. Zawada.
Yes.
Mr. Hemingway.
Yes.
Mr. Updegrove.
Yes.
Mr. Brophy.
This personnel report adds additional staffing to the school without any discussion of evaluating other staffing positions or consequence over the offsets? No.
Mr. Panarala.
Yes.
Motion carries.
There's no one signed up for comment period number two, so we will move on to board comment. It's time.
Just a very good presentation tonight, and I do hope we look into more coping skills and other coping skills, because it might not just be one coping skill, they might be several. So please continue to look into that. Thank you, Scott Shield, for your presentation. You're really up on our facilities, and I do appreciate that very much. And I think that's it. Thank you. Congratulations, Ms. Evans. That's all.
Nothing, thank you.
I enjoyed your presentation tonight very much, and congratulations to Mrs. Evans.
Presentations were great. Congratulations to Mrs. Evans. And this is me speaking personally and not as a board member. But I think we should make awareness and say prayers for Israel at this point to end this war. Thank you.
Mrs. Scott?
No, fine, thank you.
Yeah, thank you for the prevention. That was a great presentation.
That was a great presentation, lots of great information. Thank you, Mr. Shiel. And also, thank you to all the employees, like you said, that go, I don't want to say unnoticed, but are behind the scenes every day. Those are really important positions. So I applaud you for remembering them and want to thank them as well. Congratulations to Mrs. Evans. Looking forward to your leadership. And, oh, thank you, Mrs. Denneplow, or Ms. Denneplow, excuse me, for your presentation. I appreciate it. It was very insightful. I did realize that the primary could affect those states. That was helpful to know. Thank you.
Yes, I want to thank you for putting on the presentations. That was very good. And I want to thank Scott for bringing the information about the facilities and everything. And I thank you. And I want to thank Ms. Evans, too. And congratulations. Thank you.
I want to thank Colebrook Hill for having us. Congratulations, Mrs. Evans. And thank you for our presentations tonight. And especially to Ms. Denneplow for staying on top of the budget.
Tony, I think we should introduce Mrs. Evans. I had no idea she was sitting out there. I was going to take a moment to introduce both Mrs. Evans, if you would, you know, please stand. And Mr. Houck is in the audience as well, who's going to be our teacher on special assignment. Thank you for your willingness to join and support the team. So... Mrs. Evans, thank you, words. Yeah, come on up, Mrs. Evans. This will be way easier than some of the things that you've had to do already.
You're not wrong, especially today. I just want to say thank you very much for the opportunity. I'm really looking forward to leading the high school and working with this administrative team. So thank you again, and you'll be standing around.
They're going to hold you to real high standards.
Yes, ma'am. I'm excited, nothing less. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Excuse me?